All righty. A couple of quick things before we get back on to the rest of our agenda. One is I just wanted to point out that earlier this evening, City Council and I had the pleasure to personally meet and congratulate 52 Garden Grove College graduates during the city's college graduates reception. I remember college very well. It was the best nine and a half years of my life. With the support of generous sponsors, local graduates with degrees ranging from associate's degree in psychology to doctorate's degrees in business administration and management were honored and celebrated for their achievement in higher education. This event, now in its sixth year, has grown each year, which demonstrates the importance of a higher education as it represents in our current and future generations in Garden Grove. The city is proud of these fine men and women representing the best of our community. An exciting future lies ahead for these Garden Grove professionals, and the city wishes all of them continued success in their careers and future endeavors. And then, next, I want to take one item out of turn because I promised I would, and I see Heather Strattman here waiting patiently in the audience. I didn't want to make her wait till the very, very end. So, this is actually under Matters, 8B. This is "Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing City Staff to Participate in the Association of California Cities' Orange Counties' Regional Planning Efforts Regarding Homelessness and Permanent Support of Housing." So, I'll ask Heather to come up, but in short, I'll just preface it by saying the ACCOC has been very active, working to, as the, kind of a hub for policy in Orange County, to bring people together to have a more regional discussion about homelessness in recent years. Excitingly, that's finally starting to occur. So, that dialogue has become more regional in recent months with United Way stepping in, with some heavy-duty private sector donors stepping in. And so, this resolution just sort of simply is a place marker to authorize our staff to be able to participate in that regional effort, and this is starting to be approved around the county with ACCOC's urging. So, I'll let Heather speak to it, and then...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's nice to be here. My name's Heather Strattman. I have the pleasure of serving as the Chief Executive Officer for the Association of California Cities, Orange County. We have been in a long-term, sort of strategic planning effort to find solutions within our system for the homelessness population. And as a part of those solutions, and in partnership, deep partnership, with the County of Orange, United Way, our regional stakeholders, and all of the cities of Orange County, we determined about last year that in order to create flow on the back end of the continuum of care system, which means that if a homeless individual was to enter the system today into an emergency shelter and was therefore diagnosed with both a mental health or a chronic health condition, that permanent supportive housing would be probably the most appropriate direction for those individuals to go. Today, the county sits at 2,600 units of permanent supportive housing. Every single one of those units is completely full. So, when you think of our system and flow in the system, you know, regardless of what we have at the front end, we really don't have a back end of the system today that is accommodating to the population we need to serve. And so, ACCOC is spearheading and sponsoring what you will hear frequently as the 2,700 permanent supportive unit plan. That is what is before you today. We believe strongly that if we can create, site, and construct 2,700 units of permanent supportive housing within the next three to five years, we will create immense capacity on that back end of the system. I don't want that to be confused with that being the system as a whole. We're working on that as well, both from a mental health component and a public health component, as well as transitional and emergency beds. So, there, a full system is underway. But this 2,700-unit plan is critical to the back end, and we are asking the cities, all the cities, to step in and participate in this plan. And as just a sense of what that regional effort looks like, we took these 2,700 units that we knew we needed, which was basically doubling of our system today, and we populated that out per the population of each city. So, if you're City X and you are 3% of the 3.2 million people in Orange County here today, we gave you 3% of that 2,700 units. It was our attempt to not allow the cities who've braved the brunt of this issue for years and years to continue to have to do that, but rather to regionalize and bring all of our collective partners and stakeholders and cities to the table. And so, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of the quick and summary of it today, and delighted that this resolution is in front of you today, and really looking forward to working with your staff in support of the 2,700-unit plan.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions? And I think, are we actually taking action on this tonight, or we're just agendizing it for the next meeting? We're actually taking action? Okay, cool. I would, any other discussion? I would like to move that we adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
Call to vote?
Whoa.
It's fast, eh?
Wow.
An inside joke, we got a new computer.
Motion received. Motion received, seven yes votes.
Great, thank you. Okay, and I have one other item that I would like to pull out of turn, and that is item 4B, which is actually on our consent calendar. And it's just because we've got a bunch of oral cards, and we've got Tammy Tran here somewhere. Where is she? There she is, joining us. So, if I could ask Tammy Tran to come up, and James Peterson, from Southern California, Edison, but here representing API. So, consenting on 4B is adoption of a proclamation declaring May as Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and we do actually have a proclamation for that. So, if I could move approval?
Second.
And we can call to vote?
Wow. Wow. You can keep hearing this all night long, Tom.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, great. And then, I have the proclamation out.
Mohawk can take a picture for us.
Yeah, if you guys can come here.
We've got a picture.
The pizza taken.
Scott, can I have a picture?
Yes, you do.
No.
Go ahead.
My name is Tammy Tran, and I have the great honor of being a resident of the city of Garden Grove. I live here 24/7. The only time I'm away is when I'm working for Southern California Edison. And so, I'm here with my new colleague, James Peterson, who will be your new representative for the city of Garden Grove soon. I just got a promotion at Southern California Edison, but I will still be very much involved in the city of Garden Grove. But we're very happy to accept this resolution, not just on behalf of Southern California, Edison, but on behalf of the Asian Pacific Islander communities. The month of May is Asian Pacific Islander Pacific Heritage Month, and Garden Grove is home to the largest Vietnamese community, home to a large Vietnamese-Korean business district, and we're very proud to see this community be a part of the fabric of Garden Grove. So, as a resident and on behalf of Southern California Edison, we're very happy to accept this, and some might wonder why we're accepting it. It's because Southern California Edison will be hosting with the city of Garden Grove an Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebration this coming Friday. The event is at 10:00 AM here at the community center, so we welcome all residents of Garden Grove, and we're hoping to see all of the council, as well as the city staff there this Friday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. In with that, we will go back to, actually, we're going to, wait a minute, where are we? Yeah, we'll go back to oral communications, and I do have a handful of cards, starting out with Jonathan Swaim.
Last one in, first one up. Well, good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff. Again, my name is Jonathan Swaim. I was here last council meeting as, I'm a board member for the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association, and I just, again, wanted to invite you all to our annual neighborhood meeting and backyard brunch. It will be held on June 2, 2018, at a local residence here in Garden Grove. You'll be seeing this flyer all over social media and around the community. We really encourage all council members and staff members and anybody in the community to come join us. It's an opportunity for this nonprofit, nonpartisan organization to bridge that gap between our elected officials and the residents. It is family-friendly, so your kids are welcome. It's a great time. There'll be raffles and good food, so we hope that you join us. Thank you.
Nicholas Dibbs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, citizens of Garden Grove. My name is Nicholas Dibbs, and I've lived in Garden Grove for over 40 years. I'm a teacher and an educator, graduated from Pacifica with honors, and then became a teacher. And it was a very pleasant experience today, for the second year in a row, to be one of the sponsors of today's college graduates reception and honoring the college graduates from Garden Grove. And as a teacher and an educator, education is important. By educating our students better, we can be problem solvers and work together for a better community. So, Mayor Jones, I thank you again for having brought that idea forward six years ago, and it was a pleasure to be a sponsor for the second year, one of the sponsors for a second year in a row. And I am grateful that you and the council, as well as John Monchancius and his staff, put that together today, a very good event. With regard to the Councilman Beard's resolution on West Garden Grove, I think there could be some tweaking to it, but overall, I support the concept of having some sort of business district, not just in West Garden Grove, but in other places of Garden Grove, like they do in Long Beach, where we have Belmont Shore, we have Bixby Knowles, we have California Heights, we have downtown, you know. So, we just take the same ideas that other cities are using and have a, to help encourage businesses in each community of the city. It doesn't have to be a divisive thing. I think, Chris, we can tweak some of the language in it. You know, it doesn't necessarily have to be finalized today, but overall, I'm in support of it. And there's some language that I've mentioned to Councilman Beard that should be considered and changing. Okay. Now, I do want to comment with regard to SB 54, which was a heated item that was brought up by several speakers at the last council meeting. It is not necessary for this council to be compelled necessarily to take a stand on SB 54 one way or the other. And the reason I say that is that's a state law that's been debated in the State Assembly and in the State Senate and signed by the governor, and if every city had to take a stand on everything that the state legislature does, we wouldn't get anything done. The bigger picture we have to look at, and as a teacher and an educator, those who study history know that if you study history, you don't repeat the mistakes of the past. And what we have here on the immigration issue is the politics of division, where people get divided into one camp or the other and miss out on what the big picture is. And so, this council has not taken a position and said that we're not a sanctuary state. We haven't said that we're a sanctuary state, or a city, excuse me, and we haven't said we aren't a sanctuary city. So, we, I don't think it's necessary for this council to get embroiled in the immigration issue when this council has no authority over the borders, and I don't think you have to be pigeonholed into taking a position one way or the other on SB 54. Take the third alternative, which is to leave it the way it is, in favor of what was voted on several months ago, when I spoke in favor of what the police chief had said, which is the resolution that was passed at that time. So, I just want to point that out because the issue is very complicated, as those of us who study foreign policy know, that the US government, over the years, because of the situation in Guatemala, Honduras, and El Salvador, where our own government gets involved in arming the militants down there, who then torture and abuse the citizens which come here, and then with NAFTA, creating over a million people out of work by NAFTA, then they want to come here. So, these issues are very complicated, and I think the council is correct in not taking a position on that issue. Thank you.
Ted Stevens, sorry.
Read my notes. Honorable Mayor, City Council, thanks for letting me come up and speak today, and thanks for coming, and the mayor, and some of the staff, and Councilmember Beard were at a public safety meeting last week. Thank you for coming out. It was a great meeting. We had a great turnout. Just need a bigger venue next time. But anyway, I was just coming up to talk briefly about item 8A. I've lived in West Grove for 20 years. It'll be 20 years in May, so, and May 20, I think, actually, is when we moved into our house. So, we'll be coming on 20 years. Couple of years ago, about four years ago, we had the opportunity to upgrade, possibly move, bigger house, something, but we love our neighborhood. We love West Grove. We love the city of Garden Grove, and so, we decided to just add on to our house, rather than leaving our community. So, we love our community. We take a lot of pride in our community. I think this is a good idea, as the previous speaker mentioned. A lot of other cities have these types of things. Everyone knows where Second Street is. If I just say Second Street, everyone's going to go, oh, that's in Long Beach. They all know. So, it's a similar thing. There's Fourth Street, there's all the other, there must be 100 different communities in Long Beach. I think they have a tagline saying, "Many unique neighborhoods, one great city." So, there's nothing wrong with having that. It doesn't mean we're putting a wall up. It doesn't mean we're trying to be divisive. It's just, it's a way to help sell the city, possibly bring in some businesses, sales tax revenue, which would be good for the city. But overall, again, I think it's a good idea. I saw the previous verbiage. I like the new verbiage. I wasn't opposed to everything in the bad one, in the previous one, a few things maybe, but I think the new one is great the way it is. I don't think it needs to be tweaked. I think, hopefully, you guys will support it and approve it tonight, and just want to let you know, I know there's a lot of people in our community that support it, and we hope that you'll support it too as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tony Flores.
Good evening, council staff. I'm Tony Flores. I guess I'll just start off with the SB 54. You've seen the emails. You need to take a stand on it. It's an oath you took. It's about the Constitution. We all know that Garden Grove isn't a sanctuary state, but what came out of Sacramento is disgraceful, and you folks have sent letters before and other things that are far less compelling than this. So, you need to stand up, and you need to do something. I know you've already said you're not going to, but if you're going to take a wait-and-see attitude, the word on the street out there is, "Your wait-and-see attitude with crime, your wait-and-see attitude with our budget." Your wait-and-see attitude isn't working. It's not working at all. And if you were at that meeting on the 30th, and so were you, and I believe you were there too, and you hear what the chief said, "Our crime's out of control." They're going to come knocking on our doors, asking us for help because of your indecision, your lack of action? That's not good for any of us. You know, a lot of young people here today, graduating, coming into the world, stepping into, maybe hopefully getting their own place, but for what? To have somebody break into it and steal, when you folks haven't taken the time to make sure that we're safe? And again, this is coming right from the chief. You guys were in that same meeting. Mr. Doe, Mr. Andrew Doe put on a great show there, but you all heard him. When I asked him what his plan was, he said he didn't have a plan. He spent 10, 15 minutes telling us what he's been doing with the homeless, and then he said he didn't have a plan. Incredible. I mean, embarrassing. And you folks just sit there and say and do nothing. And speaking of which, too, on that mailer, you folks have seen the item that's on there, using public dollars to put your names out there. I think you might have an issue with that. Not totally 100% sure, but the FPPC will make that decision, and then we'll see what we're going to do from there. As far as the things that we should be doing here, contrarian crime, lowering our high-density housing, addressing the homeless, I sent you a email earlier this week, I believe it was, with the cart that was parked there on Huntley, never seen before in West Garden Grove, and there it is. Not sure what you're going to do with that. I mean, you're our quote-unquote "West Garden Grove District Councilmember. Need to answer the folks out there. It's not good." Regarding the West Garden Grove proposal, there's nothing wrong with the initial resolution. There's nothing wrong with using the term "all-American" when we're in the United States of America. I mean, I'm not sure what the uproar on that is, but we've changed the name of a street to some foreign emperor that no one's ever heard of to gain revenues. Nothing wrong with West Garden Grove. We've put all kinds of signage up and down Garden Grove Boulevard that I certainly can't read. Nothing wrong with the West Garden Grove District. We've seen the actual street signs with the Korean Business District and the little Saigon based on race. No issues there from anybody. We shouldn't have a problem putting up West Garden Grove. You folks need to do a better job with that, and don't just be council members, you need to be leaders. And if you're not going to be leaders, I'll remind you how to do that. In closing, we put on a golf tournament earlier this, excuse me, last month, the Bill Craven Memorial, excuse me, the Bill Craven Golf Classic over at SkyLink's. We were able to raise enough money, we, actually, we cut a check earlier this week to the football boosters at Pacifica for $1,526.60. We hope to double or triple that next year. Any case, thanks for your time.
Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Do you know what today is? Today is VE Day. Does that ring a bell? On May 8, 1945, Nazi Germany surrendered to the Allied Powers. It was the end of World War II in Europe. There's not many people left now that were participating in that war. I've had the fortune to know several people who participated in World War II, men and women. A lot of people think, "Well, okay, the veterans were only the men." There were many women, millions of them, who participated in every area, not just nurses and things like that, but also pilots. As a matter of fact, my mother was a Rosa de Riveter at a Lockheed plant. She built P-38 fighters, and a lot of the women flew those fighters to forward bases where they were manned by the crews that took them into combat. There is an organization called the Freedom Committee of Orange County. We meet on the second Wednesday of every month at 11:30 at the Church of the Redeemer on Fairview, just north of the fairgrounds, across from the college. This is a group of veterans from all different periods. We have World War II veterans, Korean War veterans, Vietnam War veterans, Cold War veterans, Middle East veterans. We all come together, and our whole purpose, that was created by a man named Jack Hammett, former mayor of Costa Mesa, and a Pearl Harbor survivor himself, was to go to the schools and talk to the students about our experiences in the military. Give them some kind of a sense of what it means to serve your country. Now, I hope that if anyone is available, that they will come to this meeting. It's open to everyone. We have great presentations by our members, and there's no cost. We start at 11:30. It ends at 1:30. Again, it's on Fairview. In regard to the proclamation, way out west in Garden Grove, where the coyotes roam. Way back when we're talking about setting up districts for our city, there weren't enough settlers there to create a district, so they had to do a little chopping up, and they took an area west of, I'm sorry, east of Peach Boulevard, just north of Westminster, and said, "That's West Garden Grove, too. Well, that's where I live. I live one block north of Westminster on one side, a block and a half east of Westminster on the other side." So, I'm wondering, if this resolution passes, are they going to have to go back and relook at the population for the districts, for the elections in Garden Grove? And are we going to become West Grovers or Westminsterians? Thank you.
Public Mayor, council, it's a pretty tough act to follow. Good job. I was at the meeting, Mr. Doe, you guys attended out in West Garden Grove the other day, and I didn't put my feelings out there. It was a pretty big crowd. Really wasn't a way to get the microphone around fast as I thought, you know, maybe could be next time. What I'd like to see is for you, there was a lot of retort to questions, but no answers, so a lot of just talk, and instead of taking a stand, you kind of just got around things, and it's kind of like soggy toast. It really doesn't do much. For my elected officials, I would really like for you to just tell me how you feel. I mean, if people are asking you, "How do you feel about this particular subject? 54, pretty big for me. Recently, had an unlicensed driver back into one of my company vehicles. Totaled the truck. My guy's been off week, five weeks, still no sign of returning. Had a truck that was $1,700 a year to operate, to replace it $1,700 a month. No license, no insurance. He had an ID card. Didn't impound his car, didn't arrest him. He's still driving around the neighborhood. He waves hi. The other day, he just come over and talked to me. Yeah, oh yeah, sorry about that. Well, sorry about that. Is a tune of $70,000, $80,000 to me and my company? It's not really something that's very palatable, and people don't see that when they talk about, "Oh, they're just people." But what we need is everyone to be under the law. There's a lot of things that aren't quite right, but if we don't stand up together like those Almeidas is standing up by themselves, that's a lot tougher for them to do if they're not joined by their local communities to say, "Hey, we believe in the same thing. We're standing up with them. Oh, we don't want to get sued by the ACLU. What if they have to sue 10 cities as opposed to one?" They're going to have to divide their dollars even further, and that may make them think twice about that as well. I would like to see some, if you truly believe in that, some solidarity to that. So, yeah, homeless is a big problem. We had a few conversations about that. There's so many questions to it. It's pretty deep, but the truth is, with the, more of what the police chief had to say, a lot of those folks really don't want help, as long as our laws don't make them get off the... As long as our laws don't make them get off the drugs, the drugs are telling them to get more drugs, and as long as that's not a crime, that's what they're going to continue to do. And they're going to ride around at nighttime on bicycles, looking for open doors, rashing in windows, taking whatever they are. There's a big cost to that as far as a society. And if we would just stand up and make our voices heard up at State Capitol and say, "We don't like this. This is not working out for us." And that's what we're electing you to do, is to be our bridge in our gap there. So that's about all I have to say, and I thank you for your time. Oh, wonderful invocation today. Thank you very much for that.
Lenore Albert Sheridan.
My name's Lenore Albert Sheridan, and I just wanted to introduce myself to you. I've actually been here a couple times over the years on different things, from redistricting to a couple other items, but I just want to introduce myself to you again and to the community because I'm running for District Attorney. And on May 20th, 2018, at the Temple Best Shalom in Santa Ana, there will be Moms Demand Action. Orange County is actually going to be holding a gun sense candidate meeting, so I'm inviting everybody who's up here and anybody in the community to go ahead and attend that meeting. It's from 1:30 to 3:00 PM. I wasn't going to start out this way, I was just going to do my rote candidate thing, but after I heard some comments, I want to mention something. SB 54 isn't going to solve crime in Garden Grove. That's not what it's meant to do either way. And it's not going to solve the homeless problem either way. But there are diversion programs that exist. I went to, Federal Reserve held a program. $16 billion of programs are out there with grant money to come into local communities like Garden Grove. There are programs that have already worked to reduce crime by up to 85% that LA County has instituted. There's only seven people that went to this, it was a weekend seminar, only seven people from Orange County. None of the other candidates or the incumbent went to this. If I'm elected as District Attorney, I plan to bring these types of programs into this county and release them to the cities so that you can use these, because these things actually work. And when you talk about reducing crime by 85% in LA, there's no reason that that couldn't work for Garden Grove also. But a little bit about myself, my name's Lenore Albert Sheridan, I'm running for District Attorney. If I win, I would be the first female ever elected in Orange County as District Attorney. We've never had a female elected District Attorney before. I'm a consumer protection lawyer. I've ran my own law firm for 17 years. I've also done civil rights law. In 2011, I'm known for stopping over 1,000 foreclosure sales here in the community against Wall Street with very little resources. I also have experience reorganizing government. I reorganized, I assisted reorganizing the government of Turkmenistan. So the DA's office is over 900 people, has 50 different units. I actually have the experience to actually reorganize that department. I promise to strongly uphold the law, of course, when it comes to reducing fraud or corruption that targets consumers. I also will take on big polluters, traffickers of women and children, domestic terrorists, and those who misappropriate public funds. Now rumor has it, and I have not, I only saw this in the article like everyone else, that there's $700 million sitting there at the Board of Supervisors to assist with the homeless situation. And I request, and I've requested this of other city councils, to at least send an email, send a letter over to the Board of Supervisors, ask them, confirm it. Confirm or deny, is that money actually there? I do know in 2016, I've been to a couple of these, they list off four different laws, you know, that were passed here about money, this, that, and the other. There's one that they're always missing, and it was one that was passed in 2016. And that was our Halls of the Homeless Project that was passed by the state legislature, and our tax dollars went into that in 2017. I'm pretty sure that's separate from the $2 billion that's sitting in Sacramento right now in that lawsuit that's being held up. So start asking those questions. The cities deserve that kind of support. If your taxpayers have paid that in, you know, get it back out. I'm the most educated of all the candidates. I received my degree in economics from CSU Long Beach, my Juris Doctorate from George School of Law, and I received an international law certificate in Salzburg, Austria. So I would just ask for your vote. If anyone wants to look up my information online, it's at lenorealbert.com, L-E-N-O-R-E-A-L-B-E-R-T.com. The only thing you'll see on the ballot is my name. I was sued by all sides trying to get my name off the ballot. The only thing that's left on that ballot is my name. So you have to go online to find my candidate statement. It's kind of tricky to do. But it is there, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And that is all the oral communications we have. We do have one written communication, 3A, which is a consideration of a written request from Cub Scout PAC 271 for cosponsorship of the annual Cub Scout Push Card Derby.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The Scout PAC 271 is requesting City Council approval for cosponsorship of the 2018 Push Card Derby event that will be held on Saturday, July 14th. The Cub Scout PAC 271 is a nonprofit organization based in Garden Grove. Each year, the Cub Scout PAC coordinates a push card derby event that requires closure of Springdale Street south of Lamson Avenue. The event is open to all Cub Scouts in Garden Grove and in Orange County. Cosponsorship for the Push Card Derby event will have an impact on the city's general fund. The cost to provide staff support to close city streets is approximately $5,100. The association will make a contribution of 1,000 towards, actually, sorry, disregard that. Staff recommends that the City Council consider the request from Scout PAC 271 for cosponsorship of the Push Card Derby event. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions, staff?
Just quickly to go over the cost, the $5,100, if we could talk a little bit about, obviously it's to close the streets, but what else is in?
It is only for public safety, so it's for our police officers for the duration of the entire day. We have to close down starting really early, about 6:00 AM.
Any other questions, comments, motion?
It's been going on for the last 16 years. It's probably considered a legacy event for the city. It's well-established. But just to highlight a point that you made, it just doesn't cover that end of town, it's also the entire city, Orange County. It's a great family event. They do raise some, I don't know if they raise money at all, but it's an event that is well enjoyed because it's the father, the son building their push cars, like the old boxcar derby that you see. And it's primarily at that location because that is going down Springdale. That's the only man-made racetrack there is in the entire city that I'm aware of. So it's a fun event, it's a family event, it's similar to Little League, it's just a great event. It's well-attended. I want to give a shout-out to George Bridgum, who's the founder of that event, and thank him for making that possible. It's very well enjoyed, and so I strongly support it as a family-oriented event. So with that, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
I'll second. Call the vote.
Wait a minute, I have questions. So I didn't realize that he, you know, customer increase beer, you know, propose to make the motion and to vote on it. So staff, for the last couple of years, I have asked many different organizations in the city that, because the city is facing deficit and that we are cutting costs very aggressively and that we don't even have enough money for, you know, to hire more police officer. And this year, we are cutting 5% across the board. And two years in a row, I have asked, I'm happy to support, you know, events such as this, but we ask the organizer to start, you know, asking other, you know, business and organizations to chip in and help instead of just, you know, consistently relying 100% on the city effort. Have the organization been trying to reach out to other businesses to ask for sponsorship?
Not that I'm aware of, but I would need to discuss that with the organization. So I know that it is a lot of just families that come together for this event. There isn't really any money raised. They have one food stand, I believe, that they have baked goods, sills, and that's pretty much it in terms of any type of fundraising going on during the event. So it's...
Do you think if we, the city, you know, ask other big business, you know, like auto dealership, hotel, like Marriott, Hyatt, to, you know, to donate and sponsor a part of this cost, what would be the possibility for that to happen?
I think that there is a possibility, but that's up to the troop to make those type of requests on behalf of their organization and then be able to then contribute to the cost to the city for that support.
Have you made that suggestion, as I did mention over and over two years ago to them, and suggest that they also need to reach out to other businesses in the city? And I'm sure many organizations, you know, value the benefits that the scout brings to the youth and to the community. And I couldn't think that they would not willing to support if they go out to ask for that. I've been at this event a couple of times, and I'm also a former vice chair of the, you know, of the scout. So I just wonder why we haven't, you know, give them some help and some suggestions to help them go in that route.
I will work with the organization going forward. Some of the other groups have made that effort, such as our Sister City Association with their 5K, but unfortunately with this group, I know that those fundraising efforts are a little bit more difficult because there's not really, outside of going out to request the funds, there's not really any opportunities for raising money during the event itself. But I'll work more closely with them to see for future years if they can somehow offset the cost to provide city staff support.
Okay. I just want to have it in the record because I have asked staff to work with them and make this suggestion. Every year when this come up, I make the suggestion and I kept saying that I don't see correction and I don't see, you know, things moving along that way. So I would like to direct staff to, you know, give them some help, right? Because sometimes if we say that, but if they may not know that there may be help available as instead of just, you know, go and ask the city to help them.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bowie, to your question, just to follow up on a couple of things, we're in the process, we've had a couple of requests from council members to give you an update on all of the events throughout the year where we've done waivers or things along this line. So we're in the process of preparing that list for you. I think there's eight, nine, 10 events like that throughout the year that we do, so we're going to get you that list and we'll work with the community services, myself, my office, to make sure that we reiterate to all of those organizations that, you know, the council is looking for us to figure out ways to increase sponsorships, reduce dependence on the local government for it. So we will continue to work with that and we'll get you some of that information about what we've got.
Speaking of that, when you give direction to staff to cut 5% across the board, what does that, what area does that mandatory 5% cut touch?
Well, we'll be, all of the departments are in the process right now of sharing with us their 5% reductions. We're going to be coming to council, I think, the second meeting in June to review those reductions. It's factored into the budget and what we're preparing for the second year, so we'll be talking more about that next month in the budget.
Okay. If that should be the case, I would like to make an alternate motion because I believe this is the right principle that, you know, when we, you know, when we have to tighten the belt, you know, we need to tighten the belt across, you know, the entire organization. So I'd like to make an alternate motion to approve this amount at only 95%. Because I would like to, the 5%, the 5% cut would be applied to all of the programs that come across to the city as well. I don't know if that's clear to the staff? So 95% of the requested amount?
So you want the organization to pay for 5% of the $5,100?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be the alternate motion.
Is there a second for that alternate motion or no?
If I can just chime in quickly before we decide on this. I think, I agree with the councilman that I think this is something prudent to look at for the future, but for this, I would prefer to maybe see this go through at this time since this is kind of, we're just now discussing this. Again, I think it's important and I think it is something that we need to look at considering all of our budget cuts and the deficit and everything. But I wonder if the fairness level of throwing this at them right this second...
I don't know if it's the appropriate mechanism.
I don't know. I mean, I want to, like I said, I agree with you and I think it is important, but I don't know if right now, for this particular year, if that's fair.
But my question is, you know, why is it that we, that every group assume that if they ask something that they are 100% will get it, right? So I don't think we, the obligation, so the question of fairness, I don't think is applicable here. And 5% is not a big deal, right? 5% of 5,100 is how much? It, huh? $250. So it's not a big deal and I could just say, yeah, we could vote 100%, but I want the public to know that and I want to, you know, scout, especially with the scout, and I'm a former scout as well, I want people to realize that, yes, I understand the city is under, you know, financial difficulty and I am, as an organization, I want to be a part of taking responsibility for that burden. So even though it cost me 5,100 because of the police involvement, but I understand the difficulty the city is facing, and so I'm willing to take 5% on my own burden to share that burden with the city. I think it's really fair. It's not going to put a lot of hardship on this program and on the scout, and I think the scout need, I believe in the value of the scout. The scout always take responsibility and always be ready. So this alternate motion is not to penalize the scout, but to show that they take ownership of difficulty.
And I agree. I see where you're coming from, but if we were going to ask 5% of them today, then that means that you would want 5% from every other organization moving forward?
I think so, yes, yes. Because we are in difficulty, so if we, if the city manager is doing a 5% cut across the board, then all of the, you know, community programs should also say a 5% cut across the board as well. So all the future programs, we should consider that. And 5% is not, it's not a big amount, but it's a, it's a, you know, a gesture that you also share the responsibility with the city.
Anybody else feel free to chime in here, but...
I already have the mic on, John. I beat you to it. So I will say that I agree with the sentiment, but I don't think we should move forward with it as it stands today. I think we should start letting our community members know and people who rent our facilities out, knowing that moving forward, starting January 2019, we will be charging them X amount percent of what it actually costs when we waive those fees. I don't think it's fair to do so when they have a month to try and garner the funds, even if it's only $250 or $500. And I get that we're doing 5% cuts for our departments and we're strapped for cash, but then we approve $15,000 to repaint bus benches. So it doesn't really make sense to me that we're going to take revenue that we were supposed to be keeping that could have been used to help... that we were supposed to be keeping that could have been used to help promote these events. You know, why don't we just use the $5,000 we're supposed to be getting now that we've spent the 15 for the bus benches and give that to the scouts? I mean, if we're really going to be about that, then let's set that standard now and let staff know moving forward plan as such and, and could stop, you know, being wishy washy with these decisions.
Well, I totally agree with the councilwoman Stephanie and Kim. I think this is not fair at this moment because it's already, um, the scout already prepared a, you know, to us waiting for our decisions and moving forward. Um, I think that in the, in the, any activities, community activities in the future, absolutely, we should let them know ahead of time to anticipate. Um, this is, will be the 5%.
John?
Yeah, I just, I, the same sentiment as Councilman Nguyen. Um, I think we need to give the, all the groups a little more time. So, we can look at the, the material that we get back from the city manager, give these groups more time. Hey, we need help here, uh, you know, if you want to request forgiveness of some of the, the expense, you know, we expect you to do 5 or 10% to raise that money somehow. But we need to give them six months or a year to do that. So, I, I'm all in favor of doing it later, but I, right now it's kind of, I hate to pick out this one group and kind of, you know, just select that one group.
Let me, uh, how about this? That 5% will be on me. I would like to, uh, to start something that will be good. Uh, it would be a good for the boy scout to, to be a model. And I will be happy to, to be the first one to donate to, to this event 5%. So, uh, so that from now on, you know, next year, they will, you know, try to ask for some other business 5%, and I, I will be happy to donate that 5%.
But my only concern would be the 5% of the rest of the groups from now until December, you know, the 5% for those, to be fair. Uh, that's just me, that's what, I'm just throwing it out there. I think we need to give them a little more time to prepare and I don't think...
The other groups would have enough time, right, to...
I don't know, I don't know what's on coming...
We always have to start...
We don't know what's on the horizon in the next month.
But I, I agree with you.
Anything on the horizon?
There's, yeah, there's always requests to you, CMC, there's always requests to whatever.
And beside, I think we should be more consistent.
Yeah, I agree.
Because this right out of nowhere, throughout, and we need to be consistent throughout the times.
And I think, I also think it sends a funny message back to this organization that, well, you asked for $5,100, but we're going to approve you for $4,850 for folks within the Cub Scouts that didn't pay attention to every single word that was said and follow the exact logic behind it. So, I mean, I would, I would suggest we just go back to the original motion. We, we approved them for the budget they asked for this year with clear direction to staff that going forward, let's urge groups that come in and ask that, try and push back a little bit and suggest that they go out and get private donations to subsidize, you know, to back off the city subsidy requests going forward.
Just to follow up, I, I agree with that. Uh, I, I want to go back to what the city manager said. The report is coming. They're going to detail all the events or all the activities and all these groups that we're going to see. So, let's look at that before we start re-changing policy around. Like I said, this is a legacy event, it's been going on for 16 years. I'm okay with, uh, the, the principle of charging groups back. If they can't afford it, then they don't have the event. Uh, so that's it. Uh, principle, one of the scout laws is be thrifty and that's what they have to do. So, I think, well, let's wait for the information to come forward. If we start, change the policy all around or establishing new policy. So, I want to stick with my original motion and I didn't hear a second to that, so I think we're still at the original motion.
No, actually, Mayor Jones seconded the motion.
No, I did not.
Oh, you didn't?
No, I said, is there a second for that motion or not? That's why I would say, why did you pop it up on the screen?
That's all right.
But the, the substitute motion actually died for lack of a second. We're back on the original motion, call the vote.
Well, I thought you seconded his original motion and that interrupted.
Can, can we double check?
Well, I'm sorry, well, I, I did, I seconded the original motion, is that what you said? Yeah.
Right.
But the substitute motion never got seconded and it popped up on our screen for vote.
That was my bad.
Yeah, okay.
I just, for clarification though, for clarification, I do agree that going forward though, we need to look at a policy change. So, is that going to be part of now the original motion or does that need to be a substitute motion?
That's a completely separate topic.
Okay. But that, I want to make sure that that is...
It's a completely separate topic, but I think staff got the message during the conversation that that's the instruction. I mean, we could bring it back up under matters if we want to formalize it, but I, I think the...
Do you want, I, I have a question. Do you want to consider that voting yes for this with the condition that we are going to look at, at revisit that or you just don't even concern?
No, I thought that's, that's what would make the most sense. Then it's, that's providing that direction.
I just want clarification. So, we have a, a motion and a second on the original motion. We don't have a second on this, uh, on the alternate motion, so that's where we're at right now.
Correct, that's correct.
But there's sort of a discussion back on the original motion to say...
So, right, so I...
Mayor Proton Bird, would you share them?
The substitute, the substitute motion by me died. So, my question for, because, uh, councilmember Clofenstein asked, uh, but I, but she liked the idea that voting yes for this, uh, on the understanding that we are going to, you know, look back at some time, we will, we will, we will revisit to see whether we will ask the organization to also be responsible and go and look for additional funds instead of relying on the city system 100% and for, for any kind of event, not, not just for one program or the other. So, my question for Councilman Clofenstein is, do you want to make a substitute motion that we approve this 100% with the understanding that we are going to go back and revisit that and ask future at some specific time to, uh, to be more responsible for, for asking other businesses to help instead of just relying on the city? Because this, the reason this is born because every single year we discuss this and we never take a formal, um, direction for staff. And so, you know, every year we, it keep coming back again and again. And then it's, it's a last minute, so we, we just don't want to, to be a burden on them.
Two.
Um, I think we should separate two things out, in my opinion. Is we still move on with this, with this original? And then we're going to separate, the other one is to, for future matters, we can discuss more. Because when you discuss more about 5% for the upcoming or next community activities?
That thing was a die, that thing was a die. We're talking about, not about 5%, we're talking about for future, uh, application.
Okay.
Should we...
Then you can set the standard guidelines, then you can set the cap. What, uh, what the maximum amount that the city can carry 100%? And if you pass that level, then percentage that you can, can to build back to the city. I mean, you have to set that guideline with the, you know, the level, like 0 to 5,000 or 4,500 city absorb a sponsor and then more than that.
Yes, Councilman Tuha, uh, the previous city council, we already talked, this issue coming up, you know, over and over again. And we, the direction to staff is to, um, you know, communicate with, with the organizer to ask them to be, uh, more proactive and, and less and less dependent on the city system. But that never happened because it never be formalized. And so, we just, you know, uh, we just never really, staff never really communicate to the, the organizers to, uh, to encourage them to do that. And so, that's why I think, uh, Councilwoman Clofenstein and I was thinking that perhaps as a condition for approving this 100%, you know, we want staff, we want this council to consider whether we direct staff to come back with a more formal recommendation so that we can discuss as a future. So, we could do that under matter of, uh, from the council or we could, we could do that as a condition for this, for this, uh...
Does that have to be to vote or can, is that just something we just talked about?
Well, it, it depend, it depend on whether your votes yes for this require that other action. If, if, if you want your vote yes on this requiring that, then we need to, to make a substitute action now. If you don't require that, then we could just separate that into...
I'm fine with separating.
Yeah.
Call the vote.
This, no, okay, got it. This on the original motion?
To approve the request. Original motion because there was no second on it.
Yes.
Just want to make sure.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes on the original motion.
Okay, we're going to recess and conduct successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Beard?
Here.
Member O'Neil?
Here.
Member Tuha Nguyen?
Here.
Member Clofenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yeah.
And Chair Jones?
Here. Um, we already did oral communication simultaneously with city council, so we'll go on to consent items, just receive and file of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Um, public hearings, 3A, um, we, we, on a technicality because of noticing, I think we missed a day or something in terms of the noticing being sent out. So, we have to continue this to the next meeting or to a date certain or how do we?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you can, uh, you can refer this on to the first meeting, uh, of city council in June.
Okay. Do we need a motion to continue it or it's just...
We don't need a motion, it'll be re-noticed.
Great, thank you. Any matters from agency members? Um, seeing none, we'll adjourn back to city council. Um, which takes us to consent items. We already took 4B out of order. Um, so it's recommended that 4A through 4J minus 4B, if you're a geometry major, be acted on simultaneously. Do we have a motion or anyone like to pull?
I would like to pull 4F.
I'd like to pull 4C and I was just curious about 4A. Is there anyone from the Strawberry Festival here today or anything?
Anyone from Strawberry Festival here?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay, so just for, um...
Sorry, so 4C and 4F.
I would like 4C, yes, please.
Okay, uh, I'll move the balance.
Second?
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, 4C.
Um, my reason for pulling 4C is just some discussion that I saw through, um, different residents on Facebook asking questions about it. Obviously, the Gem Theater is, um, a very important and special, um, thing to the city. So, I just thought it'd be nice to give the report and kind of explain what's going on just to keep the public in the loop.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Uh, before you, you have a request to amend the, uh, the facility use agreement with One More Productions for the Gem Theater. The Gem Theater is a, is Garden Grove's historic playhouse. The theater's current tenant is One More Productions and is an award-winning theater company in Orange County. On April 23rd, 2008, the city and One More Production entered into a 10-year agreement for One More Production to be the sole operator of the Gem Theater. In exchange for providing $150,000 in capital upgrades, One More Production operated the Gem Theater rent-free for a term of 10 years. During this term, One More Production brought nearly 50 theatrical productions and expanded the artistic reach into the community with award-winning musicals. Through its productions and generous support of local nonprofits and businesses, One More Production has added artistic value to the downtown civic center area and helped to revitalize historic Main Street. The city's intent is to extend the facility use agreement for multiple years. However, the city would like to extend the current agreement to April 23rd, 2019 with the sole purpose of drafting a substitute multi-year agreement. Currently, there would be no financial, uh, additional financial impact to the city and it is recommended that I was, that the city council approve the amendment to the facility use agreement between the city and One More Production for the Gem Theater. Authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and make minor modifications as appropriate thereto on behalf of the city and authorize the city manager to enter into the full amendment to the, this agreement on behalf of the city. I'm available for any questions.
Um, it's not really a question, it's just obviously I, I support this one-year deal and hope that we can come up with a multi-year deal as soon as possible. I think the gem truly is that a gem in our city and is vital, important to have the arts in our community and in our local downtown area. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve...
Any other comments, questions, anybody?
That just, that just shows how...
Yeah, I have a question.
Spirited I am about this.
Question? Question to the staff?
I just want to highlight a fact. So, we, we, over the last 10 years, we've given them rent-free.
Rent-free, that's correct.
And there's, there's a cost to that. So, I bring that, related to the issue previously discussed on cities subsidizing events and such. So, let's put this into consideration. I think this is a worthy event that sponsored for the community, theater, community theater, museums, that, and that nature are, are a part of the Garden Grove. So, I wanted to just say those types of activities, inclusive of the theater, is important.
Right. Um, just to clarify, it, it is, uh, rent-free for 10 years, but in, in lieu of $150,000 of capital improvements that One More Production did to the theater.
Right, so it's a, it's a wash. But my, my whole point is like, we, we have to look at all the events, look at all, all activities, what we support as a city, as a community. And I think the arts is, is very important to support. And so, it kind of lets itself with how we help them, subsidize them, our participation with them, our partnership with them. So, that's also in consideration as well because the last item was talking about nonprofits and the legacy and the events. I just think there are certain events and certain things in a city, in a community that you have to be supportive of. Uh, the public arts is one of those, so I just want to make that comment.
Any other comments?
Question? Is there any reason why this cannot be a multi-years?
So, currently right now, what, what staff is looking to do is to do, um, look at some comparable, uh, rates with other theaters. Um, and staff needs some time to do that right now. And so, we want to be able to have, uh, an amendment to this current agreement to give us that time so that we can, um, also make an assessment of the theater to see if, um, if there's any additional, uh, capital improvements that need to be done, then we can also add that to the contract.
Okay, are you going to look into that in any time soon or, or we're going to just continue one year and then when this, this next contract is done, then we, we do another year? Or are you having any plan to...
Yes, the plan is to, to work on that immediately.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Stephanie?
I'll go back to my motion, please, to approve this amendment to the facility use agreement.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, 4F.
Yeah, I'm pulling this off just to make note that, uh, I, I would like to commend staff for, uh, pursuing the buy, buy local in Garden Grove. And with that effort, uh, with the ordinance, we're now able to support local buy, uh, in this case, it would be to California Fuel Lubrication, uh, which is a local Garden Grove business. And I, I thank you and would like to commend staff on that.
Is that a motion?
Uh, yes, I would like to make the motion.
Second, call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to, um, item five, commission committee matters. We have one item 5A.
Item 5A is approval of fiscal year 2018-19 downtown assessment district budget, adoption of a resolution initiating proceedings for the levying of assessments for fiscal year 2018-19, adoption of a resolution approving the engineer's report and adoption of a resolution of intention, fixing a time and date to conduct a public hearing. And Ms. Neal is here to give the report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pomeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. In March of this year, the downtown commission approved the fiscal year 1819 budget for maintenance services such as landscaping and minor improvements. The proposed budget reflects no increases in assessments and remains at $19.92 per linear foot. For the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, the city council must approve the proposed budget, direct staff to initiate assessment proceedings and approve an engineer's report. This assessment will raise approximately $27,000 in revenues. Tonight, the city council is asked to approve the downtown assessment district budget for fiscal year 1819, approve the engineer's report, adopt the attached resolution of intention to levy and collect assessments and set a public hearing for June 12th, 2018. This concludes my report and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Anna. Any questions or comments to staff? Um, seeing none, I will move it.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, um, six items for consideration, we have two, so six... Okay, six items for consideration. We have two, so 6A.
6A is adoption of a resolution amending the CalPERS contract with classic public safety employees for cost sharing and the introduction and first reading of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Authorizing an Amendment to the Contract Between the City of Garden Grove and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System." And Ms. Lee is here to give the report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you is to request an adoption of a resolution of intent and ordinance to amend the city's contract with the California Public Retirement System to implement cost-sharing provisions per Government Code 20516 for unit members considered classic safety members under the Public Employee Pension Reform Act. In 2013, the City Council approved a 3% salary increase for safety personnel to offset an additional PERS classic safety member contribution of 3%, all to be effective July 1 of 2015. The city implemented the memorandum of understanding terms by adjusting the classic employee PERS member contribution from 9% to maximum 12%. This action occurred three years before the PEPRA cost-sharing mandate became operative January 1 of 2018. Now that the PEPRA cost-sharing mandates are in effect, the city must ensure that our PERS contract reflects any prior cost-sharing agreements with its safety members. All PERS agencies must ensure that MOU language affecting a PERS provision be consistent within each represented union at an agency so that it may be included in the PERS contract. Consequently, the city began the contract amendment process by meeting and conferring with the Garden Grove Police Officers Association, Garden Grove Police Management Association, Garden Grove International Association of Firefighters, Garden Grove Fire Management Association, and the Garden Grove Employees Association. The goal was to update and standardize the MOU language to ensure compliance with the California Public Employee Retirement Law regarding cost-sharing for classic safety members. As of February 2018, all affected bargaining units have agreed via MOU negotiations and/or a signed letter to the modification in the MOU language. As a final step in the PERS contract amendment process, it is required that the City Council adopt the resolution of intent and ordinance, and that staff conduct an election affirming the bargaining group's approval. There is no financial impact in fiscal year 2017-18 or thereafter to the general fund as a result of this contract amendment. The classic member contribution, excuse me, the classic member contribution was negotiated in 2013 and implemented in 2015, and the members' contribution weight was adjusted from 9% to 12% per the MOU agreement. It is recommended that the City Council approve the amendment of the PERS contract to adopt the cost-sharing provision for classic safety members by adopting the attached resolution of intent, conducting the first reading of the attached ordinance to amend the city's contract with the California Public Employment Retirement System, and directing staff to schedule a second reading of ordinance on the City Council agenda. This concludes the staff report, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Janie? Seeing none.
With a motion?
Second.
Yep, two hot second. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Yeah, I did.
She did. Okay, 6B.
Item 6B is approval of cooperative cost reimbursement agreement with the City of Santa Ana for the rehabilitation of Westminster Avenue from Harbor Boulevard to Fairview Street, and Ms. Neal is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Pomeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The City of Santa Ana, as the lead agency, will be rehabilitating Westminster Avenue from Harbor Boulevard to Fairview Street. Santa Ana has offered to improve the City of Garden Grove's portion of the project, which comprises one-third of the project's scope. Staff has reviewed all plans, specifications, and construction estimates, and has verified the work to be done in Garden Grove's portion of the project. The total construction cost for the City of Garden Grove will be approximately $435,000. Tonight, we ask the City Council to approve the cooperative cost reimbursement agreement in the amount of $434,869.70 with the City of Santa Ana for the rehabilitation of Westminster Avenue from Harbor Boulevard to Fairview Street, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and make minor modifications as appropriate. This include, this concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Anna. Any questions? Comments, a motion?
Just a comment to say that I'm happy that they're fixing that street in my district.
Cool, is that a motion-ish?
Motion.
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
So now you will have to put up with graphics in that area.
I don't live on that side anymore, so okay.
Hold on one second. Okay. I was just trying to see what this was. I had to pull up the attachment, and now I'm stuck. Okay, we're on 7A, and it's... It's a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2891, but the page was just blank, so I didn't realize what it was. So I believe this is for the, for the... Yeah.
The skeleton.
That thing.
That thing.
The rusty skeleton, exactly, yeah. So that's what this is.
Okay. So, item 7A is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2891 entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Planned Unit Development Number PUD 008 2018 by changing the zoning designation from GGMU 1 Garden Grove Mixed Use 1 and O S Open Space to Planned Unit Development Number PUD 008 2018."
Okay. Any questions, comments, or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, and that takes us on to matters. I want to point out that we already took 8B out of order. We pulled that one earlier, so the only listed item left is 8A.
West Grove Resolution?
Yeah, discussion on a resolution designated a portion of Garden Grove Boulevard, west of Western Avenue.
Okay, if I may. First of all, I want to thank, I want to thank the council for the opportunity to bring this back, to revisit it, revise it. It has been revised, but, you know, got a lot of good input, excellent input on it. I think the intent is to narrow it down to a, it's a draft document. For the first time I've ever seen a draft document be criticized or critiqued in public, or edited and critiqued, and I appreciate that. It's all good information, so I'd like to refine it even more, if I might, to narrow it down specifically to the intended purpose. Originally, that is the marketing, the branding of West Garden Grove, comparable to the Korean Business District, Little Saigon, the other areas we've done. We have precedent in other areas of the city, so, and I want to emphasize one very important thing. This is a betterment and improvement for all of Garden Grove. Any economic development in any portion of the city is a benefit to the city. I've used this phrase before, and I'll say it again, a rising tide lifts all boats. So with that, when we first got into elective office in all our districts, that gave us a very good opportunity to see what the issues, concerns, and what was going on in our own districts, but also on this, on the other hand, it also gave us a view of the opportunities that we have in each one of our districts. We've taken advantage of the opportunities in the Resort District, in Little, in Korean Business District, Little Saigon, and all those areas, the Grove Resort. So this is, this, in this area, with this resolution, I believe it presents the same opportunity to address an economic need and an economic opportunity in that area as well. That could be a benefit to the city. We've identified in our retreats, we've identified economic development as a very key driver in the future of this city, and this is a part of the future of our city. So with that, the comments, I'd like to scale it down or narrow it down to, I had some edits related to the designation of the West Grove District, west of Western Avenue. If we want to get strictly into business, which is the intent, we have the commercial area of Valley View, we have the manufacturing industrial base, so that area is inclusive of Valley View all the way to Beach. So I would like to edit that to say a resolution in the City of Garden Grove designated a portion of Garden Grove between Valley View and Beach as a West Grove Business District. I think that really pinpoints it, it really sets it apart, and it clearly identifies what the intended use is and what the benefit could be to the city as well. We had some comments about the annexation portion. I gave a historical perspective, at least I tried to, and that was my emphasis by saying the annexation of the western portion of the city occurred in July of 1959. Very interesting, if you do some reading, the progression of the housing in Long Beach, the builder, and everything, how it moved over there. The city, West Garden Grove, had a choice back in 1959. That choice was be in an unincorporated area or be part of the City of Garden Grove. They chose that, and that was deliberate, and that was a good decision on their part, and always has been since. We've had the neighborhoods, we've had West Garden Grove. It's always been inclusive of Garden Grove. They chose to be in Garden Grove, unlike Rossmore or other areas, so I want to make that point. But I'm, I think for the purposes of this, we can leave that editing out. I don't think that's necessary. Again, I want to focus on what we're concentrating on, and that's the branding and the marketing of this area. I don't think, we had a comment, good social media gave some good criticisms, critiques, and that was asking about making reference to the District 1. Again, that was historical perspective. We can take that out, it's not necessarily, because people may be confused, it's like the boundaries, they're shifting, let's not confuse that, let's just take it out. So a comment, an excellent comment was, whereas, and I'm just basically reading through the resolution here, one paragraph was talking about, "West Grove strives to grow and improve by establishing favorable environment for business attraction, retention, private investment attraction of new jobs," and somebody made an excellent point, and new families, new homes. That's another intended purpose of this. It's like showcasing that area as a good place to live, as is all of Garden Grove. So with that, if you go down to the reading of it, it also gets into, does, it mentions designated west, western, west of Western Avenue. Again, I would replace that between Valley View and Beach as the Business District. So I'd like to make those edits before we even consider discussing it to set the stage for my intended purpose, and hopefully we can move forward. We have an economic conference coming up and to market. This is one of several areas that we can market for the city. I think this could help, and this could set the stage for businesses revitalization in that area. So again, I want to emphasize too, it says here, and even in the resolution, that places with strong brand identity find it advantageous in competitive markets to attract businesses' investments, to sell products and services. With our particular area, that opportunity, we're so close to Cypress, we're so close to other areas, there's a large corporate headquarters community over there, so I think that is the draw that we want to attract. We have, it's phenomenal, the growth, the opportunities. Basically, I talked to neighbors, and they're saying we're, the leakage is there. I see my friends and neighbors at, outside of our area, they want this attraction, and this can be the start of helping bring that in. So with that, I want to say, with those edits, I'd like to present it to the council for consideration and discussion, and hopefully you'd be supportive of it.
Okay, just keep in mind, I'll probably circle back around to you later to ask for just bullet point, kind of clarification on exactly what it is that you're proposing to modify, because I don't know that staff caught all that. Like, what exactly are we taking out? What are we leaving in and stuff? If it's to be in a form that we could act on it tonight, so we know what we're, what we're taking out or what we're doing.
Okay.
But I appreciate your cooperation and working and sort of being...
And I appreciate your feedback as well, I really do. I think it's very constructive, it's very positive. Like I say, I think it's, it's us looking at opportunities, and that's an opportunity over there, as we looked at other opportunities throughout the city. So this is one, I think we can move on, and unity and support, because again, our common goal is economic development. Our common goal is the future, the betterment of the city. This is a part of that future.
Okay, with that, I'll open up for discussion in just a minute, but I just want to preface it by saying, you know, my, my goal as mayor, my vision would be to see a unified Garden Grove. That, to me, this isn't exclusive of that, right? Like, this, this works within that. I like the way one of our oral commentators said earlier today about Long Beach having a lot of great neighborhoods, but, but one great city, right? Santa Ana, I would say, has a similar vibe going on. People have pride to live in that city, and yet there's a bunch of different neighborhoods, like the French District, Floral Park, Washington Square, wherever. There's different neighborhoods or different parts of town, and in fact, we have it too. We have a Little Saigon, we have a Korean Business District, we have Grove Resort District, we have Central Garden Grove, we have a lot of different areas, and my dream would be to see that all those different areas kind of have their own unique sub-personalities and sub-cultures is fine, but all tie into the same. And with that, I appreciate the spirit of cooperation here and everyone sort of interacting with Mayor Protembeer to try and move this forward into a form that's acceptable to everyone, so with that, any...
Can I also comment on another thing I think is very important to highlight? There's an industrial manufacturing base out there. It never gets talked about. We talk about West Grove, we talk about neighborhoods and this and that, but I think part of our business plan going forward is to highlight that area, business retention, expansion, attraction. We have some major businesses out there. I think there's over 90% occupancy. We have to take care of that area. If we lose some of those manufacturers, some of those businesses out there, that's a heavy hit on the city. So this is a part of that as well. This is a big part of that. It's business improvement, and it's business retention, and it's business expansion. Those are the key points of this as well. I just want to emphasize that. So don't just look at neighborhoods and commercial. We need some commercial activity, we need restaurants, we need all that, retail businesses, we need shopping opportunities or shop opportunities, as I've heard it said, but the industrial manufacturing base is doing well out there. We have to keep it doing well, and that benefits, again, the whole city.
Thank you.
I am very happy, and I'm ready to support the change that you propose, customer member Mayor Protembeer. I think it's very important that we focus on the economic, the business development, and, but I just want to clarify, the Little Saigon District and the Korean Districts, it's a formal resolution, name for it is Korean Business District, Little Saigon Business District. It's not Little Saigon District, it's Little Saigon Business District, but we nickname it. We call it Little Saigon Districts for convenience, for, for, for it's a... And the focus of all of that, the Grove District along the harbor, is to drive business development of that area. So I think the West Grove Business District is consistent with that, with that true, you know, with that program that we have been trying to do for, for the last couple decades. And I too also agree with customer member beer that it is very important for us to, as a whole, to continue to work to develop the Valley View Corridor, as well as the industrial park along the North Boulevard. When I campaigned both in 2012 and in 2014, I emphasized part of my goal is to hope to develop the industrial district along the, the North Avenue, North Street, and I would hope to be able to, to work with you and to support you to visualize and pursue that, that vision for us. The, the value, the economic engine that we all contribute to develop for, for any district, District 1, District 2, 3, 4, 5, or 6, it's all come out to, to support the City of Garden Grove as a whole. So I think it is important for us to unify together to see if we can support each other to, to pursue that for, for our resident, and I am really glad, I'm really thankful that you, you are considering and working with us to, to, to work that role. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to commend you on the changes. Constructive criticism sounds like a good thing, and sometimes, but when it's actually pointed at you, it can be hard to take, and so I appreciate the fact that you were able to take different opinions, even really passionate ones at times, and listen to them, and they didn't fall on deaf ears, and so I appreciate that. I think at the end of the day, yes, we have districts, and yes, we have portions of the city that have been branded certain things, but at the end of the day, we're all working to better the entire city. It's a beautiful city, and I know you feel that way about Garden Grove, and I hope you would continue to champion that in West Garden Grove or West Grove Business District. And so again, I appreciate the changes that are made. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm all in favor of it, and I appreciate the changes. The people, I think the residents of Garden Grove sometimes don't realize what a gem we have there in that industrial area, in that commercial area, of how much tax revenue that brings in, the jobs that it provides in that area, hundreds and hundreds... in, the jobs that it provides in that area, hundreds and hundreds, thousands of workers that work in those buildings, probably a lot of them live in Garden Grove, but a lot of people in Garden Grove aren't really aware of that. But it's a, it's a vital part of the city, and I think rebranding that area is only going to help, like, like Mayor Protem said, is the retention, number one, is key, because when you lose a large business, it, it really, it takes a lot to replace it. And then bringing in the new stuff to fill that other 10%, so I'm all in favor of it with the changes that you said.
Well, I'm definitely very happy that you, that you take all the comments and considerations and changing to the better name. Actually, that was the intention last time, that was proposed is to have a Business District in the West Grove Business District. So, thank you very much for, for representing your district, and I think each of us have the same goal is to, for Garden Grove as a whole, not just district.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, I, my, I think my attempt, my initial attempt, attempt was more probably considered a marketing effort more than was a branding effort. So there's a stage in the process. This is all new to me, but my intentions are to grow that area, as we've done in other areas of the city. I think the resort area is the best example of that. You know, if we, if it's a success there, it could be translated and transferred over to other areas of the city, I think this is an area that can be transferred to.
Thank you. Okay, so that being said, Maria, do you have a copy of this in front of you?
I do.
And could we kind of just walk through it and sort of, so there's clarification on what exactly is being modified?
Do you want me to just go over it with the title? I can even say, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove designated the portion of Garden Grove between Valley View and Beach Boulevard as the West Grove Business District. And the first, whereas, since the formation and incorporation of the City of Garden Grove on June 18th, 1956, and then we could strike the next sentence, which says, and with the annexation of the western portion of the city in July 1959. Moving down to the third whereas, I would take out the entire whereas, which is the whereas in 1916, sorry, 2016, the City of Garden Grove, I'm really going back historically, but in 2016, the Garden Grove City Council officially established the West Grove, I'm sorry, the, City, let's just take that out entirely. The next, following the whereas, West Garden Grove strives to grow and improve by establishing a favorable environment for business attraction and retention, private investment, attraction of new jobs, and new families. And then going back to the last whereas in the resolution would be designated the area between Valley View and Beach Boulevard as the West Grove Business District, and have edits and changes. So hopefully that covers everything.
Can I get it?
You want to add families too? I don't know about that.
Well, it's-
Just, just to make clear for the record, after the now therefore, at the end, where it says, designating the western portion of the, of Garden Grove as a West Grove Business District.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
With those changes, I motion to approve.
For the western portion, can we change that to western portion between, again, reiterate the top of the end, build it the Valley View-
Yeah, designating, whereas, designating the area-
Yeah.
Western, western avenue, yeah. It's referenced again in the last whereas.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, I thought I covered that. I didn't.
It's covered.
Okay. Want to read the whole message?
Get it, got it, got it? Okay, okay.
It's clean, it does the job. This does the job.
Make a motion to approve with, as the changes that were just read. Second it, all the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Beautiful, unanimous, guys, good job.
Thank you, thank you all.
Okay, so we already did 8B, so matters, just general matters from councilmembers. Chris, anything?
Are you going to make the announcement? We won't have a meeting next time? We're having a-
I guess I am.
And that's, the only thing I want to say is-
I'll just, you good?
Yeah.
Okay. Just a shout out for the Magnolia Park Family Resource Center, Councilwoman Stephanie Koppenstein and myself were able to go, not last Saturday, but the weekend before. Magnolia Park, as a lot of people may not know, there's a Family Resource Center there that's been there forever, but they've been, they just celebrated 18 years, and they, they offer a lot of services to the, to the residents of Garden Grove. Just a few, you know, you could Google Magnolia Park Family Resource Center and see all the services that they provide. So take a look at that, things like health, fun activities for, for families, workshops, parenting classes, youth programs, education programs for parents. So take advantages of the resources that are in your own city, and this is in District Two, so just want to thank everybody that works at the Family Resource Center, the city staff, and everybody that supports that. There's a ton of nonprofits that support that, that group, and I thank them for all the work they do, because they do all the hard lifting. Thank you.
Okay, Kim?
So I have a couple of things. I usually try to keep my comments very brief, so I'll ask that my council colleagues bear with me, and no one have a heart attack, I'm not going to take any action, I'm just speaking from the heart for a second. But first, I'd like to start that I had the privilege of attending the SCAG Conference last week, which is the Southern California Association of Governments. It was very educational, attended a lot of really good panels, sessions, and one of the ones that I found most enlightening was the housing panel. A friend of mine from, Councilmember Rex Richardson from Long Beach actually was one of the panelists, and, you know, he was talking about stats, like millennials in Long Beach will have to stay for 32 years before they can own a, you know, own a, do a town payment on their home. So, you know, listening to all those facts is just a lot of concerning things for me. We really need to focus on what's now being called the YIMBY Movement, which is yes in my neighborhood versus no, not in my neighborhood. There's a lot of funny acronyms that we use that I won't repeat on the dais. But I will say that my experience in SCAG was kind of clouded by some comments made by councilmembers during the General Assembly that were very racist and bigoted, and myself sitting next to Councilmember Su Silva from Fullerton, and looking up ahead at the table where the executives sat, and seeing Michelle Martinez, who was the past president, and Councilwoman Mayor Protem from Santa Ana, and, and the three of us just looking at each other in awe at what was being said, and having to just sit there and, and, you know, deal with it, and, you know, be professional, and have decorum, and here, coming to council and having to listen to those same sort of rhetoric comments. And I want to apologize to the staff who was sitting in the other room next to me, because I went in there and I had somewhat of a small outburst, so I want to apologize for them and thank them for just sitting there and allowing me to have my moment, to be angry. As you all know, I am the first person of Latin descent to sit on this dais, and I grew up having a very different experience than most people in, on this dais because of that. My last name on this placard may say Nguyen, but it should say Nguyen Ramos. My mother came to this country multiple times from the age of 14, she's had seven children, I'm number six, and I'm the first to graduate high school and go on to college. And, you know, had she not crossed this border illegally while pregnant with me, I would not be here. Or maybe I would be here under DACA and be a dreamer myself. We want to sit here and talk about SB 54 and the action or the non-action that we do not take as a city, but the City of Garden Grove did take action last year. We passed a harmony and safety resolution that memorialized the process that our police department does not ask for immigration status of our residents. That's not to say that if someone's committing a murder or robbing somebody, that they're not going to get asked that question, it's a very different situation. If you have certain feelings and sentiments towards that, I suggest that you actually read the bill before you speak on it. Those comments I take very personally, and I find them extremely offensive. You know, I've, I'm a citizen of this country, I follow the law, I did everything right, I worked two jobs to put myself through college, I've climbed the ladder, even when people tell me no, that I can't do something. Again, I'm the youngest person sitting on this council, where the, a city of youth and ambition. You know, I'm a survivor of rape, I've seen and lived through domestic violence throughout my childhood with my, my biological mother and my stepfather, and didn't rely on the police to save me or my family. I can go on and sing you the song of the telenovela that is my life, but I would just like to say that we have a thankless job, and so do our staff, and I don't appreciate it when individuals come onto our dais to express their opinions, and they berate us, you know. We work very tirelessly, we sacrifice a lot to be here, and so does our staff. If you don't understand something, there's a way to communicate with us that is respectful and professional. If you don't get a response from me in your email, maybe you should try not being racist and rude and disrespectful. Perhaps ask questions, come talk to us in a way in which we will be more receptive to talk to you. You get more bees with honey, not vinegar. I am very proud of this council, we may not agree on everything, we may argue from time to time, but as soon as that vote is made, that vote is cast, and we're done, we're back to being a very unified council. You know, our mayor, you're amazing, thank you for all of the support, for always answering questions that I may have on things I don't know, I'm not a subject matter expert on everything. I ask questions when I don't know something, and I recommend that everyone do the same. Again, we get a very small stipend to be here, we attend events almost every day, we all work full-time jobs. I don't need you to thank me every day, come and yell at me, that's your duty, but make sure that you do it in a way that's respectful, because I don't have to sit here and be berated and disrespected, and I don't think that none of my councilmembers or my city staff should have to endure that as well. So again, I just want to say, I apologize to the staff in the other room for my, my small outburst, and I want to end with this, you know, equality feels like oppression when you're accustomed to privilege.
All right, I wanted to recognize and congratulate Nicole from the Gem Theater again on her accomplishments, she's an amazing talent. And the play that she's currently in, Patsy Cline, is going through May 13th, and happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. Yeah, definitely. And then finally, I just wanted to, a quick little vector control, HR9, we're in HR9 City, that just means that we have a lot of mosquitoes, and it could be a problem come the heat of the summer with the West Nile virus. And this week, I think on Thursday, we have a meeting with Vector Control, City Manager and a few others, to just talk about kind of the game plan for Garden Grove for the summer and beyond, as we look at the fact that some of these cities are just having an influx of these dangerous mosquitoes, and what that might mean, and if there's anything to report back, I'll make sure to do that.
I'd just like to report on the trip that I represent the City of Garden Grove to the Capitol, the, to, you know, lobby for the state bill 895. It was unanimously passed. There were four of us from Garden Grove that, that came up to Sacramento, beside myself, there's another Vietnamese name, is Dr. Long Pham, and one other medical doctor, and Mr. Tony Cadias of the Golden Mother also come to, to speak on behalf of that bill. There's also a city councilman from the City of San Jose, and about, roughly about 100 people total come to, to speak on behalf of that bill, and it was unanimously passed. So now it will be introduced to the Senate floor for, for a vote. I also took that opportunity to come to visit a couple state assemblyman office, the one that I think is the most fruitful is the, is a visit with Assemblyman Tom Daly, where I talk about the challenge that our city faced because of the recent two state law that released the prisoner earlier. I talked to him about the challenge that our police department faced, because there's so many criminals out on the street, and about the fact that it is easy for them, it is very difficult for them to, to be arrested and charged with a felony if they commit a theft of, let's say, you know, $900 or less. And the, I was explained that the Senate and the Assembly is working very hard to introduce new bill that move it back to the middle, so that it will, you know, put more prisoner in prison. And hopefully that will help us with the criminal, reducing the criminal out there in our city. They are also working on a bill to give us more funding to, to, to our city, so that we can hire more police or sworn officer to, to combat the, the crime. They told me that it probably, they're still working on it, and it will probably be considered early next year, and hopefully with the new governor. The, the original two bill was, was introduced by Governor Jerry Brown. So they think that if they pass some bill during that, during his tenure, he probably will veto it. But with the new governor, hopefully, you know, if they pass a law, you know, the new governor will, will sign it into law, and then it will help our city.
Thank you. Scott? Anathan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so assuming that our, I think our next council meeting is going to be canceled, just a couple of things I wanted to mention, May 17th is going to be the Police Memorial at 5:00 PM. I know all of you, it's been put on all of your camp, on your calendars, but for members of the public, I know if you want to come out for our Police Memorial, that'll be in front of the Public Safety Building, May 17th at 5:00 PM. We won't meet again until the Strawberry Festival, May 26th through the 28th, so I'm looking forward to attending another Strawberry Festival. And then I also wanted to mention that Councilmember Nguyen talked about the SCAG Conference. I know, Mr. Mayor, you and I drove out, and we were honored to join our staff, and they won an award for their work on reimagine, active transportation, kind of all came together on mobility and getting people around your city. And we've really, we've received some nice grants over the years from the Southern California Association of Governments, and so we were, I know the mayor, we were happy to go out and, and join them in accepting that award, and yes, Sunday is Mother's Day, so happy Mother's Day to everybody.
Thank you. You already covered the change of date on the, or the, that we, next meeting is canceled, I think on May 22nd, we'll not have a meeting. And I'd just like to close, thank you, Charles Mitchell-
We do have a closed session, attended.
Okay, well, we'll close to closed session, in recognizing that this date in 1945 was actually VE Day, so I'd like to note, just in honor of veterans of World War II, and we will adjourn to closed session, and we'll come back and report out as necessary. come back and report out as necessary.